All right, seen none. We're gonna move on to the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to support, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Board. Moving on to item 7A, which is approve the minutes from the City Commission Regular Meeting of June 16th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the City Commission Regular Meeting of June 16th, 2016.
Motion to support. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to the consent agenda. We have item 8A, which is departmental activity reports. We have item 8B, which is Marine City Fire Authority Report and Agenda Packet. We have item 8C, which is special event, Marine City High School Homecoming Parade. We have item 8D, Planning Commission Minutes from May 9th. Item 8E, which is Planning Commission Meetings from June 13th. We have item 8F, which is Tifa Minutes from May 17th. We have item 8G, which is Zoning Board of Appeals Minutes from April 6th. We have item 8H, which is Election Commission Minutes from April 7th.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda and place on file.
Motion to support. Is there any discussion on any of these items? Commissioner Simpson.
I just wanna comment on the new building official. Her report's been very detailed with us, and that's a great thing to see. Oftentimes, it was just a one sheet, and we got a little bit of information out of that, but this is a great detail, and I appreciate the proactiveness of making recommendations to us, whether we, you know, see fit or not. But it's a great thing that's seen that she's going through and combing that, so I wanted to make mention of that. That's what's great to see.
Commissioner Lovett.
Two comments. Number one is just a reminder to the Marine City Homecoming, High School Homecoming Parade, make sure they contact Holy Cross and let them know that September 23rd, their parking lot and road will be almost impassable. I know you've done that lately in the past, but just another reminder about that. And then, secondly, I'm concerned that these minutes are so late. We get information about what's happening by minutes, but when the Planning Commission Minutes are three meetings late, and the zoning board of appeals are wonderful to have them and to have the people, but it's three and a half months late. It's an April date coming to us, and the Election Commission Minutes are also on April 7th, three and a half minutes, three and a half months before we get to see them. I think we need to do that in a more timely manner.
Some of it's a bit unavoidable. The board meets once a month, and then they are approving last month's meeting, and then they have to make our next board packet, so the frequency of meeting schedules does a lot of that for us.
For instance, the two planning commission minutes, the one from May 9th was a couple days past sending the packets out. I scour the calendar, and I look at every minute that's available that's been approved. So we have to wait for them to be approved. I'm not missing any here.
Okay.
They're coming as they get them together.
But, you know...
I see your point.
You can't publish them until they're approved.
Correct.
Right.
They gotta be approved, so...
Okay.
Like, we just had the election commission meeting. What day was that? Monday? Last Monday, they got approved, so...
Yes, last Monday.
So that's a reason.
Anybody else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to unfinished business. We have item 9A, which is the adoption of ordinance number 2016-04 for the sidewalk program.
I make a motion to approve, yes, approve the ordinance 2016-04 on the sidewalk. See that we have to repeal Section 930 through 90046.
Motion to support. Do we have discussion on this one? Commissioner Simpson.
I'll keep it brief, because we had quite a bit of detailed discussion. One of the things that I've been reading online and what's been out there, people have contacted me about this, is that it's a new ordinance. Well, yeah, it's an update, so there's new information there, but this has been on the books since the mid-1980s. It sounds about a year tall. I think it's either '84 or '87. So anyone that's purchased a home since then, over 30 years ago, you know, has bought a home under this obligation, so I think that's an important distinction to make. You know, it's been that obligation for a long period of time. You know, it's been due to lack of enforcement, but I just wanna make that clarification, because I've heard that going around from quite a few people and in many spots online.
Just again, the importance of having sidewalks that are safe and approved, our insurance liability claims are, you know, less real, that our safety for, you know, everybody concerned is much better. We're trying to do this in as orderly and easy manner for everyone to deal with, and, you know, hopefully, perhaps looking at some grant opportunities that may help some low-income. So, you know, it's going to be trying to make it painless as possible with the loans from Tifa, and also doing it by zone, and doing the cement as a group, as an amount will help make that cheaper for you unless you do it yourself. Still, I think some people have already have asked for permission and to go ahead and do their own sidewalk repair. Just a reminder that if you do that, you must follow the guidelines that are in the ordinance.
Commissioner Avery. Obviously, I approve of the ordinance as written. However, it is important to remember that there's no line item of the budget for the city to actually implement the inspection, so we still have that hurdle to cover, but we are strictly updating something that has been on the books, as you mentioned.
Commissioner Henry.
I wanna thank Heather Warren for sending this. It's a nice little sheet from City of Warren, because they had all that problem, not just with trees, but the trees and the sidewalks. I know we've had this problem. I've talked to our insurance agent. This isn't a wonderful plan to have to do, but everybody is right. This is not a new proposal. This is something that we just never enforced. The only problem I have is that we're gonna use the Tifa money, and I don't think that should be a loan, because after I looked through the Tifa rules, Tifa can spend outside the district if it's for infrastructure, and these sidewalks are considered infrastructure. So you could use that money for that. So to me, it shouldn't just be a loan. We should be using the money for what it's intended to help improve the neighborhoods. But most of this has arisen because we've had numerous lawsuits, and our insurance rates went up, I think, 43 percent in one year because of the lawsuits from slip and falls. So it's not something everybody enjoys, what it's gonna have to be done. The thing is, is the city will work with people that have issues, that are having problems paying for this. There will be an avenue for people to approach the city and try to work out any type of situation. So don't feel that they're just gonna come in there and, you know, nobody's gonna try to help you. The city will try to work with people as they can when we go through this. And also remember, this first time through, we're only gonna do the worst of the worst, correct? So this is gonna be doing it in phases. It's gonna be broken up in four phases in the city, one phase per year.
Correct.
We haven't decided who's gonna get picked first. So each section of the city, one section will be done a year, and we're going after the worst, most deteriorated sidewalks first. So if you have a sidewalk that just has one single crack, eventually, it's gonna have to be fixed, but it may not be in the first round, okay? Because we have to go after the worst. If you're on a corner, too, the actual corner portion isn't yours, that's the city's, correct?
Correct. The ADA access points.
The ADA access, so don't think you have to pay for that. So those are some of the things that are gonna be done, but it'll take four years to go through the city totally, and I don't know how the city's gonna, I don't know if you're gonna pick a section. I don't know how we're gonna do that.
Just choose one.
Pick it out of a hat. I thought that was what everybody said.
I think Mike said that Zone 3 is the one with the most amount of worst sidewalks.
Okay.
So more than likely, we're gonna start with Zone 3. If this gets approved tonight, then I think Mike's probably gonna go through, take a look at it, do just a brief assessment, and more than likely, come back, let you guys be aware of where we're gonna start, and how we're gonna start moving forward with the program time schedule.
So this was just an upgrade to an existing ordinance to clarify some of the items, so it's gotta be done.
One more thing I could add, then just sort of... As Commissioner Hendrick said, we're doing this in phases and zones, and it's a zone a year, so very clearly, you can go outside in front of your home and identify certainly any major problems. You know, we're not gonna quibble over a quarter inch at this point, but the language is very clear in the pamphlet, which is available online, which is available through the city offices, or certainly, any of us can forward it to anyone who might be looking for it. But, you know, I suggest anyone thinks that they might have concerns about being able to afford that, you know, if you're in the fourth zone, you have probably maybe five years before that bill is really due, potentially six. We're probably not gonna do much work this year by the time this program gets rolling as far as physically pouring sidewalks. And if you're in Zone 4, well down the road, you know, it's a justice like any other home item, you know, even though money's tight, you need to budget for that. So if you see that you have heaving concrete, and you're in Zone 4, or even 3, you have multi-years to pay for that. So I think that's not an unreasonable request, but just throwing that out there, you know, you can take the information in this pamphlet, or even, I'm sure, Mike from DPW, he's a busy man, but he's always willing to work with people if they have any concerns, you know, and then you can be proactive and responsible in budgeting for that if you can't fix it for yourself. So just throwing that out there as well.
Very, very good point. I just wanna make a slight correction. You're saying Zone 4 would be the last one. That's not necessarily true.
Whatever zone, yeah.
Just, there are, zones are labeled 1, 2, 3, 4.
Most of the city won't happen for years, was the point.
Right. I understand that. I just wanna make sure they didn't think, oh, I'm in Zone 4, and I'm gonna be the last one. That may not be true, because Zone 3 may be the first one.
Maybe we should just take them in order, and then there's no confusion.
No, we wanna get the worst first.
I mean, that would be pretty clear for the public, though.
But, I mean, at some point, we'll inform them, you know...
Yeah, I think once the data decide, yeah.
Send a mail around, or whatever, to all the houses.
And maybe, if you're not in one of the earlier zones, and you do have issues, start working with the city now. Contact the city now if you need assistance.
You know who has, you know, bad sidewalks, and you have time to prepare, and unfortunately, it seems like a big deal now, because the city hasn't been doing its job. I mean, it's clear, this has been on books for a long time, and it's a problem that's well, you know, been going on for a long time. And I guess shame on us for not enforcing it earlier, but we gotta start sometime, or the city's just gonna, the suburbs are just gonna disintegrate.
Last point. One of the reasons, too, we had to start pushing for this, is if we didn't start doing something about it, we'd lose our insurance.
It's important, and most cities do a pretty good job of this, and we're gonna start doing a good job on it. In regards to Tifa, you know, we can't tell Tifa how to spend their money, and I don't know that they would be willing to fund the whole project, but they certainly could help reduce the costs. I mean, it'd be something worth talking to them about, that's for sure. Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Board. Sidewalk ordinance is passed. Moving on to item 9B, which is adoption ordinance number 2016-05. It's the water and sewer rates.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2016-05, water and sewer rates, and continuing surcharges.
Second motion.
With a motion to support, is there any discussion on this?
Just so everybody knows, the water usage is only going up per thousand gallons 5 cents, and the sewer is going up 4 cents per thousand gallons. That's the increase, because I thought I saw something that there was a 6 percenter out there.
Yeah, I put information on that online.
Yeah, it's 5 cents and 4 cents.
Yeah, this is probably one of the lowest increases we've had. Commissioner Simpson.
As a reminder, for those who might be new to following water rates, the reason why these increases keep happening, this is a very, very small increase, but in previous years, we've had larger ones. We supply our own water, we do our own water treatment, and the sort of break-even ideal operating portion, point for our water plant is about 60 percent or above. We're operating in the 30s, so we're gonna keep having these issues. It's a legacy cost. It's nothing anyone here chose to have, or sort of put upon us. You know, we've explored ideas over the years of asking other municipalities to, you know, partake and maybe join ours, but the infrastructure cost of tying systems together, and the legacy cost of individuals like our municipality having to pay off existing debt from infrastructure built years ago makes that not an attractive thing for people. They're gonna be, they would be paying bills for things that they don't use anymore. So, you know, we've tried. You know, anyone that's been following this knows that our Techtrac contract went up very minimally this last time, when we voted at the last meeting, I believe it was, or the meeting before, and hadn't had an increase in several years. So we're doing good with what we have, but it's a legacy that we are stuck with, and until we can get that water capacity over 60 percent, it's something that's gonna kind of haunt us. Since we're pretty well-built out, and there's not a whole lot of development that can happen in Marine City, that's only gonna be through large commercial usage of that. So that's why these rates keep occurring. It's not because we want to, it's because we have an enterprise fund that has to fund itself.
And you might wanna point out that when you're comparing our rates to other communities, some communities get their money in different ways. They collect their money differently. Some communities have ready-to-serve fees that are much higher than ours.
And people have different needs. You know, their plants could be operating at 80 percent, you know?
Right.
Ours isn't.
But it's a problem everywhere. You hear about water rates going up everywhere.
Anyone in the Detroit Water and Sewer went up double digits this year.
Right.
I just wanted to put the financials in another perspective. For someone whose quarterly bill is $100, that $100 with the new ordinance is gonna be $100.70, so just for comparative purposes.
So if it's $200, it's gonna be $1.40?
200, no, 201.40.
Wow, okay. Anything else on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Moving on to item 9C, which is the beach pavilion file approval.
Motion?
We could use a motion.
Well, make a motion that we approve the Marine City Beach Pavilion and Restrooms as presented.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion on this? Commissioner Simpson.
Keep those rates in the center.
Would you like to say something? Would I come to the podium? Let's go.
Keith Jenkin, United States South Water. For those of you that don't know, I was kind of elected or appointed.
Planning Commission appointed him to kinda work with Mr. Kudu to work out a lot of the concerns that people brought up at several meetings.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to clear up a misunderstanding at the last Planning Commission meeting. Lisa came to the podium, was asking me questions. She asked me, did you do a survey? And I kept saying, no, I didn't, and why would I do that? And I didn't realize until afterwards that you were talking about a plot plan survey. At one time...
Maybe that's what you were talking about. You just said you were gonna do some type of survey, and...
No, survey, when, what I'm talking about is the survey. I thought you were asking about the survey. Did you mean survey, like, go around and survey people? Oh, no, I never said that. Okay.
Well, you said you were gonna do a survey. You didn't say what type. I assumed that's what it was.
All right.
Keyword assumed.
I don't know if anybody has any questions about it?
No, I mean, this has gone through a lot of process here. It's gone through multiple vettings, and it's been through the city, and the Planning Commission, and ZVA, and everybody, so far, resolved.
It's been about a six-month process that initially started here at City Commission, because it is something that's on city property. Mr. Kudu presented this as an option to the city, at no cost to the city. This was something that he wanted to do as an in-kind donation to the community that has given him so much in the years, that he's provided service here through his Dairy Queen Restaurant. After City Commission, in essence, thought it sounded like a good idea, went to Planning Commission for site plan review, was there for several months, and they were working out some of the details, and they've come down to this final plan. One of the last things that they did was go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance for the setback for the restroom building portion, and that was so that it would be less intrusive on the property, not destroying any of the trees on the property, in line with the garage at the budding property, and also a little closer to the sidewalk where the people are, so that if there's anyone with mobility issues, it would be easier access for them. And then, as a final step, it's here to City Commission for their final approval before they move forward with any type of construction.
Commissioner Simpson.
As Elaine said, it came through us at the Planning Commission on a number of occasions. We only ever had a handful of people come and even speak about it, which is about all we have on most things, so it wasn't something we heard a lot of traffic about. Mr. Kudu, when he gave us our final plans, addressed many of the concerns that we had heard. One was the location of the restrooms, and again, he sort of offset that from his original proposal to try to mitigate sightlines and those types of things, and there's some lighting on the project, but all those are really shielded lights, that you're not gonna light up the sky. I had about 40 people, 41, I think it was, contact me about the project. Of that, only five were against it, everyone else was by far for it. So as a City Commissioner, when we're hearing from the public, it's of interesting note that the people that contacted me for it, only two lived in the community. Everyone else was from well outside of our community, some way far away. So I thought that was interesting and unusual about it. But just as far as, you know, people, a lot of people often say, well, you voted against me. Well, that's just one person. We, as commissioners, have to hear from a big number of people. So I just wanted to put that out there, just from my own experience. When I started hearing from people, I actually made a point, anytime I was driving through town, to kind of drive by that site, to kind of get an idea of how that site was being used. Of course, I've got a few years' experience of working the music festival there on those weekends, and seeing how that plot of land is used, but, you know, I did see a number of people picnicking there with blankets and those types of things and folding, so I think it really lends itself to that use. Another comment I'd heard is that we're using an entire plot of land, and it's sort of gonna block things, but if you really look at where it's situated, a good portion of that empty space is still available. One of the letters to me said, it sounds like it was a younger person, and he indicated how he likes to play football there. Well, if you did measurements, you can fit, gosh, you know, a pretty good-sized football field right there. And some individuals said they try to fish off that offshore right there, and all that is still available as this is presented. So I just wanna throw all of that out there, from what I've heard personally, that's my personal experience. I think it's a wonderful gift that we're being offered, and it seems to fit well with how individuals might be able to better utilize that property.
It's an amazing gift, and it's gonna be a beautiful addition to our city, and the amount of effort and work it's taking for him to donate this to the city is a testament to his will and dedication and love for the community. And because we gave our initial approval, I hope all the commissioners sitting here will vote in a positive manner for this, because to put this man through all of these hoops and then say no, I think would be criminal. Commissioner Lovett?
I'm not gonna say much, because Commissioner Simpson covered most of everything, and I wanted to say, just wanted to add the addition of the restroom. We don't have a public restroom that's available for the many people that walk through our community. We have a porta john in the back of City Hall. This would be fairly accessible within the community, besides the bathroom that's used by the swimmers who are further down, so I think it's a real asset. They quit the bathroom. Hey, being on the Beach Committee, and for two years, we couldn't have a bathroom open at the beach due to the fact that there was nobody there, so the Beach Committee formed together so we could have someone there, so we could have bathrooms open. Who's to be monitoring that bathroom through the day? Is that one gonna be left open and just chucked on by, you know? I'm just curious on that, because then my question is, well, why for two years did we have bathrooms closed at the beach?
Well, I think we've talked about that at other meetings, and there's part of the fundraising that's been going on for the beach with...
So the Beach Committee's gonna be...
I think the other bathroom's gonna be demolished.
No, no.
They're not gonna demolish that one.
No, in fact, Mr. Kudu, you know, on a number of occasions, told us that, you know, they would be willing to, you know, monitor both. And so that was offered up very, very quickly after that project was presented.
So it's gonna be closed down during the winter? Like, the Beach Committee, you know...
Which would be normal, because you have plumbing inside there, so it would be unsafe to let that go in those temperatures.
So when did the decision happen, not to turn out?
You missed it. It happened at the Planning Commission.
Yeah, it was very early. It was actually a bit of a misrepresentation. Mr. Kudu's first physical appearance in front of the Planning Commission, when we had a lot of questions for him about, you know, the structure and how it fits, and one of the many things that I can speak to, my comments to him directly, is how it was referred to as a beach, but, I mean, he said, well, that's actually was poor phrasing on his part when it was originally presented, that he want, the intention is that it's a gift unto itself, that people can picnic there, and so beach traffic has, you know, the restroom's near the beach, and it's safely contained in that plot of land that people don't have to walk back and forth. And this is a pavilion for people to enjoy a river view, a picnic on the river, a walk down towards, you know, the shops in town, restaurants in town. So it's really a separate entity unto itself, with people, since his original introduction to us, have been calling it a beach pavilion, but it's really a separate entity, and that's what he, you know, told us on several occasions at the Planning Commission.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yeah. First of all, I wasn't aware that you're keeping the old bathrooms. And the second place, usually, when you have a festival, an event, you usually have the porta johns out in the open, and to me, that's for convenience, because you got a big crowd of people. But in all due respect, I would love to upgrade the existing bathrooms and do not put the bathroom in front of the view. Who wants to see a bathroom when you're coming to the beach? That, to me, is an obstruction. A beautiful pavilion...
Have you seen the rendering?
He's looking at it.
I'm looking at it. You got a beautiful pavilion, I'm not questioning that, it is gorgeous, and I was, what I wanted to make the suggestion was, can't we upgrade the bathrooms that are existing right now?
This is free from Mr. Kudu.
Yes, I am aware of that.
You'd have to ask him that question, but I think he'd say no, he wants to spend his money on this new bathroom.
I don't have a problem if he wants to, I, my objecting is to have the bathrooms right in the point of view, right in the front. That to me...
It's a beautiful building, right?
Pardon me?
It's a beautiful building, it's not just a bathroom.
Oh, it's a nice building. I don't have any question about the building, but what I have a question is the location of the bathroom is worse. I wanted to make a suggestion, couldn't we put the new bathrooms where the old bathrooms are at, and upgrade it in that aspect?
We covered this in the Planning Commission, too. The number of reasons we put the bathroom where it is, number one, was to get it out of the view. It's kind of in the corner next to a garage, so there's really no view there, and it's...
With landscaping, so...
When we have it, when we place it there, it's amongst those trees, which enhances the look of the building. We don't have to remove any trees. If we moved it around, we'd have to remove some of those big trees. And the sewer and water tap is right there, so it's gonna cost less to bring the sewer and water in. And the most important thing is, is that it's handicap accessible. With the new ADA laws, it's gonna conform to all those laws. So the closer we are to the road, somebody comes in a wheelchair, in a van, they can lower themselves right in, come right out, eight, 10 feet away. And that was what's really important. DPW is gonna make a couple of handicap spots right in front of it.
Regarding the two bathrooms, you really have two separate units at the beach, and they're separated. You really have to walk up and across, and then back down. So on the left side, you've got the beach with all the sand, and the water, et cetera, and that bathroom that's existing there will be used for that. And they are working on cleaning it up, and there have been amenities there. The bathroom at the far other end of the grassy area, which is not the beach, it's a park area, is set aside more for those people who are picnicking, who might have a group that wants to meet under the pavilion. Now, I see people sitting out in that hot, hot sun. Now they have a chance to get up, you know, in some shade, but that bathroom is a more classy bathroom, because people aren't all wet and sandy and dripping all over.
Commissioner Hendrick.
It is a beautiful building. I've been to the majority of the meetings to listen to it. The first Planning Commission, when this came up, that's when I found out also that they weren't tearing down the old ones. The other suggestion from a lot of these people has been... The other suggestion from a lot of these people has been, why don't we use the Pearl Street lot? Because that had a house on it which would have a water and sewer connection. To me, it would make more common sense to put that in a central location, so that both the beach and the park could use it and not have two bathrooms. So it is a wonderful thing, but you have to listen to everything. I mean, this poor gentleman just purchased this house here at the end of Broadway, and now he's going to have a bathroom right next to it.
Let's pretend it isn't a bathroom.
What?
If you look at the building, you don't know it's a bathroom. And it looks better than his garage.
Yep.
I have to say, my opinion...
It attracts more people, though. You have to understand that when you have this nice bathroom, okay, which is, it is very beautiful, if you think people are going to run over to the beach one and use that and not use this from the beach, you're wrong. I mean, people are going to come over and they're going to use this bathroom, pretty probably much also than the other one.
That's what it's for, I don't have any problem with whoever wants to use the bathroom or the pavilion. Here's the deal, it's for everybody in the city.
Yes.
Everybody in the city, no matter where they live, there's a lot of people living in the city that feel left out because of politics. This is part of the deal that Mr. Kadoo wanted to do, that he wants the people from every part of the city to be able to have family reunions, weddings, parties, be able to get the pavilion, have their family, their friends, and neighbors, whatever, and come and spend the day in probably the nicest spot in the city. And it will be at that point. And part of that is having a nice bathroom, too.
I don't have any problem with the pavilion. It's just everybody, you know, I've talked to a lot of people, and when the city paid the volume of money to try to clear those lots, it was for viewing. And I understand that it can be built on, they said for public use, which the pavilion is. But when I also brought up to the gal that did the grant, the bathroom, she wasn't really aware of the total process and thought that the city might want to rethink that...
What grant?
Because of the site issues. But it's still up to the city, they can't do much about it, because even so, it's a public use. I guess the whole point is that that nice lot over on Pearl Street would solve that problem, would make it, and I understand that he wants it for the pavilion. I guess another issue we're going to have with the pavilion is if somebody wants to use this for a wedding, or a reunion, or a graduation, if the city has opted to say, "We're not going to allow you to sign up for it," I don't know how somebody's going to be able to do that, because they're going to have to do it far out, and they're going to have to want to do it. But if somebody, if they have to camp out to use it that day, how are we going to handle that, or is that something that we're going to deal with later?
It can be nice to the people, it can be, I'm sure, like... When we originally discussed this at this first meeting, we, as a group, said that we didn't want to get into the business of reserving and renting out of that...
True, so how is somebody going to do that, though, if they want to plan a wedding, and they'd like to use this nice, I mean, most other parks in the area, everybody does that. They have a sign-up sheet, you know, at least...
If someone approached us about using Drake Park to perform a wedding service, what would be our procedure?
I've seen weddings that are performed next to City Hall all the time, nobody ever reserves the space or anything.
But this is different, because it's a structure. So they're going to want to reserve this structure for a graduation or whatever. So we're going to have to deal with that eventually, because it's going to come up.
And it very well may, and that's...
We have people that can offer a potential solution. If someone wants to hold a parade in town, or even, you know, like the poppy drive that BFW and everyone does, they have to fill out an event permit. Could we potentially utilize that? That seems to me that that, in and of itself, might be a...
If I could interject, it's just, all you need to do is call East China and say, "You want to, you want to rent the pavilion, or you want to use the pavilion, you don't have to rent it if you're a resident." And they'll tell you exactly what you have to do.
Yeah.
And I would say that we could probably just duplicate that.
Yeah, and that's my point, is because originally we...
You want your own, you have to pay for each, fifty dollars to rent each, trying to...
And a clean deposit.
And I think they use that to do, keep up with the maintenance, which isn't a bad idea either here. So we're going to eventually have to come up with some plan for that. My only issue is where this is located, and that there is an alternate location. One thing I wanted to mention, somebody brought up to me once before, that there was a nice real bathroom downtown by the water plant at one time, and it was there for a long time, but it became such a problem because of the way it was used, the city tore it down. It was torn down because of the issue. I mean, that's just a sad fact, that some people don't know how to use a facility properly.
Well, yeah, public restrooms, sometimes they're like that. You go into the men's room, it's always wet, I don't know why, but you've got to use your feet for a lot of different things.
I know, I know.
It's soaked, just an inside thing, you know. The only problem I have with Pearl, well, the number problem with Pearl Street, is basically, I wouldn't want people to go any closer to that raggedy house that's sitting on the corner there. That's too bad.
He has a garage in between, and there's, I'm sure he's going to eventually have to fix it up if we start enforcing our issues.
They were actually out there fixing it today.
I've got one more thing to ask here. I see that the permit is being waived for the bathroom, I don't know if we're going to have to have separate permits for the pavilion?
Well, any permit that has to be pulled will be waived. I mean, we would be more than happy to waive it.
Yeah.
All right.
And I think we've, you know, it's a gift, it's something that he wants to do, and he chose that site, and we accepted it a long time ago. I mean, I'm just going back to that. We gave our approval of this months, months ago. If we were going to object to this, we should have done it back then.
Well, I did bring it up back then, but then everybody said it was a preliminary plan is all we were approving, so we got it sure of all the issues.
Can I ask if you do a roll call vote on this?
Yeah, no problem.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
We ready to vote?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Okay, I'm going to qualify my vote. Okay, and I'll give you this after the meeting. This is a wonderful donation by a family that wanted to give back to the community, but the city spent a lot of money to clear those lots, over $600,000, to allow everyone a beautiful view of the river. I don't have any problem with the pavilion, but common sense would say to place the new bathroom on the Pearl Street lot, which has water sewer hookups from a previous house, to allow both the beach and the pavilion users access to a new ADA accessible bathroom. This would preserve the view, so I will vote no due to the bathroom location only.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
I, too, want to clarify my vote. I am voting yes, but for the mere fact that having an AD approve, that's why, and it is a beautiful bathroom, but I personally would love to see it on Pearl, like Commissioner Hendricks had mentioned, because to me, I don't want to see a bathroom looking at, when I want to see the beautiful beach, but the bathroom is a very beautiful building, that's why I'm saying yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Sotarit?
Yes.
Thank you, board. Moving on to item 9D, which is bids for legal services. Do you want to give us a rundown on this?
Sure, sure. Several months ago, we had discussed going out to get bids for some services, and one of the ones that we did discuss was attorney, our legal services. I sent out the RFP, we did get six responses back from firms, Port Huron's, Mount Clemmons, Farmington Hills, Troy, and our current attorney firm, Plank, I'm sorry, Kane, Clemmons, Yakum, Downey, and Algonac. There are varying rates for service. Some of them have just one flat fee rate for service, and others have different fees based upon the type of service. At this point, I think what would be the next step is to select either all the firms or a number of firms to interview, probably at a special meeting that we can schedule and set that up with representatives to come and have an opportunity to present their proposal to you, and out of that, hopefully, we'll be able to make a decision.
Has anybody got anything to add to this?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, I would like more time to, first of all, to hear from the firms, I think that's a great idea. Also, to make some more contacts, I've tried to make contacts, to find out more about the, I think as Marietta City is growing, that we really need to have a very, make sure that the attorneys representing us are, you know, up to snuff and able to do what we need in the time and order. So I would propose, and kind of make a motion, that we table this until, I don't want to make a motion, I would just discuss, what I'm thinking is, is to go along with what you said, I don't know how to phrase that exactly, but that, that we pursue meeting, interviewing these firms, and setting up a committee to assist the city manager in doing that.
Actually, this would be our charge, and so I don't think we need a subcommittee. The city manager, this wouldn't be, she wouldn't be part of this decision, it would be strictly the commission, and it'd be almost just like putting on a job interview in front of the commission, that's why the city manager's suggesting a special meeting.
Do you need a motion for that?
Well, you know, I think we should take a look at this list and, you know, pare it down a little bit. I don't know if everyone's had really a chance to go through all the resumes and the...
I have.
Yeah, I've read through it all, I mean, if somebody has some recommendations of some people to drop off the list, that might be helpful. Commissioner Simpson?
Yeah, I sort of have a list of, I was making notes as I was going through everything and additional research I did. I could go about it two ways, I could give you three that I would recommend, or we can go about taking them off the list, but I think our existing attorney, you know, just price-wise and the knowledge base, I think we should definitely include them. Davis Listman PLC, because they're Mount Clemmons, which is one of the closer ones. One of the concerns I know I have is that some of these are from well out of our area and may not even have a lot of experience with our courts and making those connections locally, and that was a potential concern of mine. But the two that are in Mount Clemmons, I would definitely want to be able to hear from as well.
Yeah, and some of the firms, like the, are just so big, you wonder if they're, we'd even be a blip on the radar.
I had the same pick that you have.
The second one, in fact, it was a bit of a boilerplate, because there's, I found seventeen different errors, and they couldn't even decide if we were a township or a city. So if you can't even put together a packet, which is this thick, and get that right, then I don't know how much you want our service, and are very interested in that, and it seemed...
I would agree, very first page, they had the wrong city's name.
Yep, yeah, it was, and I did, and I still read through it all, just in case there was, there was something going on there, but the more I got into it, the more I'm like, really? And, you know, and being legal, be, you know, service, that's a very important thing, you want to make sure that, you know, every word is correct, because one or two words, and that could really alter an entire agreement, and if they can't even do that, selling their services, I would worry about how that might reflect on rendering their services to us, so...
It's a bad...
It's not being semantics, it's being that that's an important part of their job, and it's not just one or two is riddled with them.
No, that's bad.
Yeah.
So I agree. Anybody else? So, I mean, we got Downey, are we going to drop the Troy firm, or take another one right now? The other one looks pretty expensive, I'm going to take the third one down, I would just kind of say no, just, it looks way too expensive.
Farmington Hills is not next door for immediate needs.
Right, and then the Mount Clemmons ones were interesting, and again, I'd say the Port Huron firm is too expensive.
Mm-huh.
So, that's four, did you get all those?
That's three, three.
You have Kane?
We got Troy Farming, Davis Listman.
Kramer and Murray, PC.
All right, so we got three that we're looking at, and set up an interview.
An interview? Any idea on when you might want to hold a special meeting for that?
I would say like after September, when things quiet down a little bit.
That'll never happen.
That'll never happen.
It'll never quiet down.
Plus, you're going to have to try to see when they're all available.
It might quiet down for some people.
Right.
For some people, you know, things get a little slower in the fall.
Okay.
Well, if you're looking at three, you could do, you could do them all in an hour and a half, right? Give them a half hour, five minutes in between?
Yeah, that seems reasonable, if they can't sell us based on that, the information they've given us.
Are we going to, you know, are we going to put together a group of questions, or are we just going to let them give us a presentation?
To me, when I've done this, not necessarily for legal services before, but traditional way I've done it is, they prepare a presentation for us, how they can best service us specifically as a client, what their firm has to offer, and their proposal, effectively a more detailed version than this, and then they're available to answer questions that we might have as a board, and that's always, I've found that that's worked well in the past, at least from my perspective.
Just let them tell us what they're going to do, and see how that goes.
Well, and everybody can create questions, you know, if you have any questions for them.
Commissioner Malley?
I want to make a comment, was that it's nice to always self-check, make sure our attorneys are in order with other attorney outfits. It's always a good practice with business, and I found that the price is so close, I don't even realize that, I mean, you're cutting hairs between the Mount Clemmons and Downey, it's so close and variation, you know, and he's with our, he's familiarized with our town as it is. I don't think that it's necessary, I just assume, like, to just go with Downey and Yakum, that I have my approval. It might be a few dollars more, it's like six dollars more versus ninety-five, but then they have their other rates, the hundred and ten, or Yakum has their flat rate as a hundred and six dollars. So, I mean, you're cutting hairs, and I just think they're local, and they know our city, and I don't know why we have to go further on. It's good to see the comparison, is what I'm saying. I'd rather just nip it in the bud, why, why go through another process, spending time in one thing or another, but at least they are aware of that we are checking out their prices.
It's not all just about price, it's about, you know, their ability to provide the service, and their knowledge base, their expertise, and a bunch of other things, and I think it's incumbent on us as a board, you know, to do this type of due diligence.
I think it's not just a number on paper, again, it's how the service is rendered, and I think that city staff's spent a lot of time creating the RFP for this and gathering this, and individuals have spent a lot of time submitting this information, I think, to finish our due diligence and seeing that process through with a half hour with each group, I don't think is unreasonable.
Right.
I agree that our firm is doing a, you know, that has a lot of the history with our city and that, and it's a wonderful thing, and the price is competitive, but it's more than than just that in the long run.
And I'd like to point out that September has an extra Thursday, so it is one of the months that has an extra Thursday, so it'd be a good month for a special meeting. So, I mean, if you look at the calendar, you got, we got a meeting on the first, we're going to have a meeting on the fifteenth, we could set something up, like, say, the twenty-second?
That's a meet the candidates night?
Oh, okay, so...
Twenty-ninth.
Yeah, well...
The twenty-ninth would be the...
I guess for me, the eighth would probably be better at that point.
The eighth?
The eighth. I don't want to say why, but there's somebody very specialized in birthday on the twenty-ninth, I'd get in trouble if I wasn't there.
I'm available that day on the September eighth.
Sounds good. Is there a man in agreement with the eighth?
Eighth?
Yes.
All right, shoot for the eighth.
Starting at 7:00 PM?
Would you like to start that a little earlier, maybe six-thirty? Six-thirty?
Six-thirty?
All right, that's good. We don't need to do anything else with this one, so...
Can I ask?
Yeah.
I know we have the insurance quotes last, but we have poor Mr. Saaf sitting back there, and I wondered if we could move him up?
In new business?
Yeah.
I don't have an objection to that.
You're asking for a wait, Brian and I are both awake, don't worry.
So we got CBH, please, to have the item 10E in consideration, for the line of need, we're going to move that up to 10A. Is there a man in agreement with that?
Sure.
So up next would be property and liability insurance quotes.
We do have representatives from both firms that had submitted information from both Nicolons, Saaf, and Michigan Municipal League. You do have all of the information, the quote from both of the firms. They're both here and available to speak if you'd like to perhaps listen to what they like to perhaps listen to what they have to say.
I think since they've sat here and spent all this time, it would be just appropriate and considerate to have them come up and address us, so who would like to start first?
Good evening, my name is Steven Saft, Jr., I'm a principal with Nickel and Saft Insurance, we have been the city's insurance agent since two thousand and ten, I know that you've been burning hours here, so I'll try to make this very quick, you have before you a slew of information, and at any time you interrupt me, I'll be able to answer questions, but I'm just gonna talk about some highlights that are a little bit above and beyond what's included in the written narrative, to give an indication of our experience and our commitment to the city of Marine City. As I mentioned, Nickel and Saft has insured the city since two thousand and ten, prior to our involvement with the city, the premiums were in excess of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, we're tonight before you with a quote of ninety-three thousand seventy-two This proposal includes sewer backup liability coverage for the full policy limits of ten million dollars, we include abuse and molestation coverage for a supplement of a million dollars, this is important when you're dealing with a law enforcement agency that has people in their custody, it's important when you're dealing with minors and children and seniors in recreation programs, we allow the city the opportunity to select defense counsel of your choice for the defensive covered claims, so as you're speaking tonight about the Mount Clemens firms, where our firm is located, the Davis firm, we work with them in the Village of Oxford, Mike Murray from Kramer and Murray, we work with them in Mount Clemens, Mount Clemens is currently insured with the One Beacon program, and if we were in that situation, I'm sure with Yakum's firm, we look to the client for a recommendation for a defense counsel that has experience defending municipalities, and the rationale is, when you get perhaps a land use claim, or a public official's claim, or a employment practices claim, in most cases, these are incidents that have a history or a background before a claim is filed, so does it make sense to take that file from an attorney who you've been working with, who has experience with it, and give it to an insurance company attorney who has no experience or knowledge for the matter? You retain the contact and your relationship, the insurance company hires that attorney who has that experience, who has your trust, and works with that attorney for the defense of the claim in behalf of both the insurance company and the city. We think that's one of our program hallmarks, along with the full sewer backup coverage and full terrorism coverage. During the course of our relationship, we have offered ancillary services, one of those has been a independent survey, I'll pass this around, and if anybody wants to keep that at the end of the day, or wants copies of that electronically, we can provide that. One of the property cover, one of the coverages we afford is property insurance, if there's a fire, if there's vandalism, if there's windstorm damage, if there's an explosion, and the city of Marine City has water and sewer facilities, and these are rather unique, I can go down to the guy's center, and I can measure out that building, and take a look at the construction and the use of that building, and come up with a replacement value. You may have it experienced, if you own a business or you own a home, your insurance agent goes out and performs those services and said, for replacement costs, we've got to insure this structure for X number of dollars. I can do a lot of things, but I can't look at a sewer plant for the life of me to tell you how much it's gonna replace that, so at our expense, we hired a contractor, an independent contractor who was not affiliated with the insurance company, to go out and evaluate this, and it gives us a permanent record about the size, the construction, and the use of that building, you'll see, again, the water, sewer, the lift stations, anything related to your water and sewer facilities were examined and valued to assure that we are, seeing that the city is compliant with the replacement cost provisions, and by compliant, I mean, you're buying the right amount of coverage, so you're not penalized in case of a total loss. The other thing that we did when Chief Tillery was still affiliated with the city, we hired O S S law enforcement advisors to come in and do two things, basically, a, and the, a review of policies and procedures, and some training in regards to, I believe it was defensive driving?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so again, at our expense, we were told that there was a concern, there was a need perceived to come out and do some specialized training, and I felt it's important to get an independent contractor, because if you have this training from an insurance company, an insurance company sometimes is a little cagey about these things, because they don't want to be liable, this is what they do for a living, so we, again, hired a third party, an independent nationally-known contractor, O S S law enforcement advisors, who worked with Don, who rated the Marine City Police Department as superior, provided these updates, and you, what I'm passing around there is the last narrative for, from Chief Tillery, that thanked us for his, for the efforts, and acknowledged the fact that this was paid for by Nickel and Saft. Again, these are some of the added values that we bring to the table. During the course of our relationship, we've had twenty-seven claims, to date, five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars has been paid, or incurred in claims, five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, in that same period of time, the city has paid five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, that's six years, so for every dollar that you've paid in premium, the insurance company's paid out a dollar and three cents roughly. I know that the discussion with sidewalks has been a difficult and emotional one, I was before this body a couple of years ago, encouraging the enforcement of the sidewalk ordinances, through this six period of, six years, we've had twelve slip-and-fall claims for an incurred value of seventy thousand dollars, with one of those claims still open. Applaud your efforts to try to enforce the ordinances that were on the books, there was a question talked about line item funding, in Mount Clemens, what we proposed to do is to create, adopt a flag program, the Mount Clemens bid right now is approximately a hundred and eighty-five dollars with the city contractor to replace a flag of concrete. What we're doing is, we're going to some of the nonprofits, some of the churches, some of the businesses, and saying, if you donate two hundred dollars, you can adopt a flag, a flag being a square of concrete, now, we're not getting, we're not paying the homeowner's cost, but we're helping the city get the funding to start a program, so the money is there, you're gonna get the money eventually, whether it's paid by your property owner, either directly or through placing a lien on your taxes, but this was a methodology that we thought would start and jump-start the program and get some money in there, and it created some civil pride in the community and interest, and Mount Clemens, we have close to fifty percent non-taxable entities as far as the county and nonprofit organizations, and these are organizations that were interested and came forward to help with that initiative, so there are ways to skin that cat. I hope that I can brag at this, Sam, I think we've been good corporate neighbors for the city, we have supported and participated, both corporately and individually, in the recent fundraising efforts for the beach, we have been a corporate sponsor for a number of years now with the Maritime Days, and I've been a personal supporter of the Friends of City Hall, these are all things that we acknowledge as having value to the community, and again, hope that those are items that are acknowledged. We're local, I'm sure that my father has pestered Elaine and Mary Ellen way beyond any of your expectation, maybe a little bit too available, but we'd like to think that if there's something that needs to be answered, or something that needs to be weighed in on, that we're available and more than accessible from that perspective. The city's in a unique position, this policy renewed on July first, the policy is in force, we've issued the policy, we've issued the auto I D cards, and I, we give the city the opportunity to pay this premium in semi-annual installments, there's an installment sitting in your laps right now, back at City Hall, we hope that you continue to maintain coverage with the city, the city's coverage with Nickel and Saft, if for some reason you choose not to, though, we will honor a prorated cancellation, in that if you say to us that we want to cancel this policy effective tonight, we would only charge for the number of days earned, and that's a unique feature with this program, there's no notice, it's a traditional stock insurance company, and also an advantage there is this is a rated and admitted carrier, it is guaranteed by the state of Michigan, in case of insolvency, the payment of claims and the refund of premium, and it is A rated by A M Best. I made reference to the superior rating from O S S, any questions?
How did you achieve the cost reduction on the policy?
Two factors, obviously the benefit of competition, and number two, if we look at the claims experience over the past five years, we've had two insurance companies involved with the account, Tride and Argonaut, who non-renewed due to claims, I mentioned a figure of five hundred and thirty-one thousand, they paid approximately four hundred and ninety thousand dollars for those claims, when we replaced that coverage with One Beacon, they've had a much better experience, and we were able to prevail upon them to set aside that prior experience and look at just their experience.
And that, was there any, anything removed from the policy, or changed from the policy to get the savings?
A reduction in our agency commission, now, you've got a ten million dollar policy that affords general liability, law enforcement liability, automobile liability, public officials and employment practices, these are limits of liability that are dedicated, a payment of a catastrophic claim in one line of coverage would not affect or reduce the coverage from another line, again, I made reference to the fact you're a community with an active sewer system, there's no limitation on the sewer coverage here, we provide full limits of liability for sewer backup, there's not a supplement or a cap, there's the full ten million dollars in coverage in case there was a catastrophic failure in event of the city's system, and we find that our experience in claims fall into three categories, law enforcement, slip-and-fall, and sewer backup liability. I've become quite a student of Act two twenty-two and the immunities that are intended for municipalities, but there's quite a body of law now that's, that's created an ability to work its way around those statutory immunities.
I just have one more question for you, on the flood insurance, it became an issue here a few years ago, it's at like fifty thousand deductible?
Correct.
Is that your recommendation, or do you think that should be modified?
That's the minimum deductible I can offer for flood insurance, flood insurance and earthquake are specialty lines of coverage, and those are the lowest levels of deductibles that I can present with these programs. Please keep in mind that a flood is rising water, or water that comes from the outside, if you have a burst or a frozen pipe, that comes under your thousand dollar property deductible, we're speaking, again, of rising water, or water that comes from an outside source into a structure, but if something breaks or bursts within the structure, that is not a flood, that's covered under the property coverage.
Outside of the structure, I mean, what happened here, you're probably aware, we had a water main break that flooded the city, you know, or city offices.
Right, so water flooded into the building from an exterior source, that was qualified as a flood.
Okay, anybody, got any questions? Well, I guess that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and your presentation. Sir? And you're from the M M L?
Yes. Hi, I'm Brian Stuckruth, I'm here on behalf of the M M L Property and Liability Pool. Back in the early eighties, the members of the M M L asked for help with their insurance needs, and that's when the M M L started the M M L Property and Liability Pool and the Work Comp Fund, both are member-owned programs, the city has been a member of the Work Comp program for many, many years, and we're offering the property and liability coverage as well. We did mirror your coverages, for the most part, there is a couple differences, as far as the autos and their deductibles there, you currently have five hundred deductible on comp and collision, we quoted a two fifty on the comprehensive, and a thousand on the collision. The sewer backups, governmental immunity right now has never been as strong as it ever has been in the sewer backup area, we offer a one, a hundred thousand coverage that is provided, it's one hundred thousand occurrence, one hundred thousand aggregate, with a zero deductible there, in the past, we have not had, in the past eight years, we have not had a single member, since governmental immunity has been as strong as it has, go up to that We do, we mirrored your deductibles on the liability lines for the five thousand, our flood and earthquake coverages, they have a five thousand dollar deductible as well. As being a member-owned pool, the, one of the benefits is that is there any excess surplus that is returned to the members, for the past six years, the Property and Liability Pool has paid a dividend back to the members, it's ranged from eleven to fourteen percent of your annual premium, after your first renewal, you'd be eligible for a portion of that, after five years of being in the program, you would receive a hundred percent of your dividend that you would get, the first year, you would receive ten percent, second year, twenty-five, third year, fifty, seventy-five, and then the fifth year would be a hundred. We have over four hundred municipalities within the state of Michigan, all our, your claims would be handled out of our Sawfield office, that's all we do, is municipalities. Got any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? So this is a self-insured program?
That is correct.
And how long has it been in existence?
Since eighty-three.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, and it's a non-accessible program, non-accessible pool, along with the copy of the proposal that was in your package, it's a copy of the intergovernmental agreement, when you join the pool, you sign an intergovernmental agreement, and basically outlines what you should expect out of the pool, and what the pool expects out of the members, and for the most part, it also says how the board of directors is elected, which are all municipal officials from other communities around the state. It points out that, in there, that we are a non-accessible pool, so if for every reason the pool is not in existence, they will never come back to the city and ask for more money because a member down the road had a claim, something like that, the pool is fully re-insured. Yes?
One of the issues for members, responsibility is that, second one from the bottom, a member will follow loss reduction and prevention, prevention measures established by the pool, can you give some examples of, maybe in the recent five years, that things that might fall under that category?
Our loss control comes out annually and does a walkthrough, they do this for the Work Comp program, too, any suggestions they do, they send in a letter, a bullet point, any suggestions, and all that saying is that to be responsive to loss control, some of the things that maybe they suggest would not be budgetable right now, but you would consider it down the road, that's all they would ask, is to be responsive.
And I guess if we were to want to cancel this contract down the road, what's the, is there any limitations on that?
The M M L pool policy is an annual policy, so once you join, it's for a year, and then if there's ever a time that you want to leave the pool, or take bids, and you may leave the pool, they ask for a letter sixty days before your renewal date, and that's for budgetary purposes, because it is a member-owned pool.
You have any questions?
You know, I don't have any questions, they are both very good reputable firms, I've worked with both of them in the past in my previous job, they're very different ways of achieving, in essence, the same thing, is trying to ensure and cover the city and save us from any catastrophic events that could potentially be financially devastating to us. Looking at the policies, there are some differences, higher limits of liability, higher deductibles, lower in some cases, it really is, I think, a matter of preference for the city, what you think would be most efficient on how to handle this, Nickel and Saft obviously deals with quite a bit of municipal, as you can see from their letter, the firm, One Beacon, is the insuring agency, handles four hundred municipalities, M M L, four hundred municipalities, those are strictly Michigan, though, they really are both very good plans, I don't, I don't think that you could go wrong with either one, I don't really have any particular recommendation one way or the other, unfortunately, on this.
If I just may, our local clients that represent here in St. Clair County include Marysville, St. Clair Township, Clay Township, Ira. Marysville, St. Clair Township, Clay Township, Iowa Township, Berlin, and Casco. And just across the border, New Baltimore. And obviously several communities within Macomb and other counties also. We insure out of our agency currently over 40 municipalities in southeast Michigan.
Thank you. So, any discussion? Commissioner Simpson?
Yes, I'll start it off. I want to thank both gentlemen for waging through a long, long meeting and for your time put together, both being here tonight and putting together the proposals. To me, it kind of comes down to, you know, very close, both very reputable organizations. We're less than 4% cost difference, which, you know, if we had to make a claim, you know, 4% is out the window anyway. So to me, I would be inclined to go with this one of the devil, you know, and the one who's got the experience with our staff and that, not that, you know, another group couldn't come up to speed very quickly. But to me, that comfort level and that existing business relationship, it seems to me, might serve us better in the future.
Commissioner Hendrick?
I'm going to agree. There's only a $3,000 difference between these two policies also. I know there's differences in, you know, some of the others. But again, it does come down to experience working with a firm, and there's nothing wrong with either, but I feel more comfortable with continuing with what we have.
You got anything to add?
If nothing else, this exercise was successful. We end up staying with Nickel and Saff because they were able to come back with a reduced price here, so that's good. I guess I wonder why that couldn't have happened before, but we won't get into that.
I guess that would be my only point. Yeah, there's a big comfort level, but I do a lot with insurance myself, and I get a bit out quite a bit. Always amazes me is how, when you get into that process, how the prices come down. And then they slowly go up. Personally, what I do personally is totally different than what, you know, we have to do here, but I like to reward the company that generates the savings. Typically, that's the way I make the decision. But I agree that there's a big comfort level with, you know, continuing on with this company.
If I may, and not to that point, this is a process you've got to do once every three to five years. Because one of the first questions that I get as the agent from the insurance company is, is this going to bid this year? Now, the number that I first came in with was lower than the first number they came to me. We negotiated on behalf of the city. And we worked that number down. At that time, we didn't understand or know that there was competition. And so I didn't have that hammer. So you've got to be truthful with these people because you've got to be able to establish a relationship. When we understood there was competition, they sit up in their chairs. And again, this is a process that every community, I wish every community would do once every three to five years. Because number one, it allows us an opportunity, but again, it keeps those pencils sharpened. And we've both, I'm sure, been on the same side of this thing where there's a relationship over a period of time, and a carrier gets that creep going on. But as elected officials, to do this due diligence once every three to five years helps keep that in check or helps keep you in the market. And this is a situation, I'm repeating myself now, where an underwriter legitimately looked at a five-year history and saw 103% loss ratio. And it was some heavy negotiation to go back and say, all right, let's acknowledge this, but let's look at your independent history, go over the past two and a half years, and try to shade the 400-plus thousand. So again, that's part of the value, I think, of the frequent bidding and also the relationship the agent has with the carrier to be able to go in and do those type of negotiations. Thank you.
I think that's on us. The creep is all because we haven't requested that. You know, we should take equal responsibility in that as well.
Right. Would you like some equal time on?
I just wanted to ask, Nick, did you take in consideration that we are going to implement a sidewalk program?
I've portrayed to every insurance company I've talked to and more than one that the city has a sidewalk program and has had one in place. You've had the ordinance. What I've tried to prevail upon them is that, like many municipalities of Michigan, there's been a difficulty in cash flow. There's been a crisis in relationship to property values. And the enforcement of some of these issues have been problematic in relationship to other priorities. So I've never wanted to portray that the city didn't have a mechanism in place or didn't acknowledge the fact that something had to be, or something that needed to be done. It was a matter of trying to explain to somebody that, you know, we're all trying to find nickels and dimes. And this goes back to the effort that we've undertaken in Mount Columbus as far as the adoptive flag. And that creates that beginning cash flow.
Thank you. Did you have anything else you'd like to add? You're good. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to retain Nickel and Saff as a property and liability insurance provider for the city. Support.
So we have motion and support. I think we don't really need any more discussion at this point. So can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Skatarget?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Carries?
Congratulations, and thank you very much for your time.
Could you move the police up there too, so they can get out of here?
Sure. Serves for moving things around. Would the police like to be moved up on the agenda?
We're here for you.
Okay. Well, these other items will be quick, so we'll just leave it alone. We'll just go in order now. Introduction of ordinance number 2016-03, pedestrians Right-Away.
I make a motion that we approve to amend the traffic code Title VII, Chapter 70, Traffic and Motor Vehicles by adding Section 70.002, the pedestrian right-away ordinance number 2016-23.
Support.
You have a motion to support. Any discussion? Commissioner Hendrick?
Quick question. I know we talked about whether there was going to be any type of fines, that's...
That's what's in there, D. D is the penalty provision that was added.
Well, it used to be...
What's the 1099?
I don't know offhand, but I believe that that's the municipal civil infraction that's $500. Okay. No?
You know what it is?
Unless it's otherwise specified in the ordinance, it's a $75 city municipal.
Yeah, that's right.
And then if it's stated otherwise, it's $500. We'd have to send it down to the city.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so.
It's worth having in here.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I'm getting to my crabby part here. Yeah, let's pick up the pace, people. Item 10B, City Beach Restroom, waive the permit fees.
Make a motion that we waive the electrical permit fee in the amount of $72 for the Marine City Beach bathrooms.
Support.
Motion support. Any discussion? Don't see any. We're talking about the existing bathrooms, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because it's called beach bathrooms. All right. Just want to clarify that.
Yeah, they added hand dryers and outlets.
Okay. It was donated work, wasn't it? Yeah. Yeah, it was donated. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Sorry, I didn't mean to slow you down. Yeah, that was like a big road bump there. Item 10C, estimates for patrol vehicle repair. Lot of money, but I've been told the car's still worth it. Did you want to?
I got some questions.
Fill us in.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. A year or so ago, our 2012 Dodge Charger suffered a, I'm drawing a blank, radiator issue, which ultimately led to the overheating of the vehicle. Subsequently, just recently, we developed a nasty tick in the engine. I brought it to three different places. All three are pretty much under the same understanding that it's the rockers, the lifters, possibly a camshaft. Two of the three places saying that it's possible that that was caused from the overheating of the vehicle a year ago. But I'm not a mechanic, I have no idea. So I'm only here to tell you what I was told.
Is the car in relatively good shape to put that kind of money into it?
It's got mid-70,000 miles on it. At this point, it's my only option I have. I've been doing some research on purchasing a new vehicle, but that's for future, that's going to be probably $30,000. So at this point, we need to plug the hole for now.
What kind of guarantee they give you, like 90 days or something?
Haven't even gone down that path. I'll start negotiating with that once we determine who we're going to go with.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Okay. All right, I got some questions for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Married to a mechanic, so you know how that goes. One of the things I did, I did do some research on these cars, and a lot of it is idle time. What they found is that, do you guys do your oil maintenance versus hours or mileage?
Mileage.
Okay. What you might want to start switching to is hours. There should be an hour reader on that dash for those, the newer vehicles all have it, okay, to keep track of the hours idle.
Okay.
One hour idling is about 33 miles on a car. So they're saying you should probably do it more often, oil changes, because these particular cars I found have a problem with the lifters and wiping out a cam. Now, I want to make sure they're going to replace all the lifters?
Everything. The whole top half of the engine.
Okay, because some people have done a portion, and then a year later, they're doing the rest. You know, too, you've got to replace them all. So we might want to change just your maintenance idea of how you want to do that.
I can address that right now. Part of going forward with the department, I am going to issue a memo that during summertime hours when it is hot, that the officers are to shut off the vehicles to help with this issue, to save on our patrol cars, because I know there's not money there right now to buy a car.
It's hard enough on a regular car, but even though a police car has all beefed up everything...
Yeah.
Because I've worked on those programs.
The only time you'll see my patrol cars running when they're unoccupied will be the winter time, when it's going to be cold.
Yeah, so I was going to say, there's just a few things that you might want to check on that, just start doing more oil changes sooner based on hours versus mileage. And that might help you in the future.
Perfect.
So, where are we going now at this point with this? You're...
You're recommending transmission physician?
I mean, do you have one you're recommending?
I recommend transmission physician. I've personally spoken with Gary Rickert out there. His quote of 2,500 includes everything and the camshaft. He said he can't guarantee whether the camshaft is damaged or not until he opens it up. So that bill may be cheaper than the 2,500. JD's quote was about, I think it was 1,700, 1,800. That did not include anything to do with the camshaft. And then St. Clair Chrysler was everything, including the camshaft, which was about $3,200. So...
Dealers are higher, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Commissioner Avery?
I definitely recommend that you have both parts changed at the same time. They're rubbing against each other. Without going into grim details, idling is harder on cam components, because those parts are designed for inertia loads which increase with speed. So the springs are set up for the high loads. When they're idling, you've got the high spring pressure, but there isn't any high valve load. So yes, oil change is good, but if you put new lifters on a bad cam or vice versa, you soon have both parts bad. Let's just do this right.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bid from transmission physicians at 2,56110 for the repair of the 2012 Dodge Charger.
Excellent job. Any other discussion?
Just that it's nice to see that it's a local company as well, so keeping that money in the neighborhood.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Skatarget?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
One more last question. Did we have to waive bids on this?
That's the next one.
No, that's a different thing.
Yeah.
We didn't waive bids on this. He just got three quotes.
Waive the bid. Can we add to it?
The bid.
Who those are.
It's a quote. Did you put it out through a bid process?
I did not.
That's what I'm saying. So we can waive the bid.
Yeah, if you could do that.
I'll make a motion that we waive the bidding process for this purchase.
Support.
Support.
And that would have to be unanimous under our current structure, correct? Just don't mind people.
All right, but, fine. All in favor. Give us a roll call on the waiving of the bids.
Okay, we're going to go with Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Skatarget?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, I think we still have to do the approval of the bill, of the quote, right?
No, we didn't reverse order. We didn't reverse.
Yeah, now we have another one for him, though.
All right, so now we're going to item 10D, which is waive competitive bidding for police department modems.
I would make a motion to waive competitive bidding for the police department modems.
Support.
Motion support. I've been told there's very limited sources for this.
There are. This is read through, plumus mandates this type of modem. If you get it at a cheap price, because they order so many of them, and they said it's the best one out of them.
Fine. So, roll call, please.
Okay, we're going to have Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yep.
Mayor Skatarget?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you want to make a motion to purchase?
Also, one other thing I would like to add. Early in the night during the talk about the beach, I'm willing to offer our road patrol to close the facilities at nighttime. My model, you know, is going to be the community-oriented policing. And I think by coming in and maybe getting a key for Mike from both the pavilion and the current beach situation, I think we'll be able to, you know, help lock those facilities up.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase from capital outlay of $2,898.57 for the modem.
Support.
Motion support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Skatarget?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
Just when you think you're done, you're really not done.
Follow-up on the comment. I think that's a great suggestion that you're willing to do that with the bathrooms.
I am.
Not only that, the...
They couldn't do a little cleanup.
The thought behind that is that the people that might cause a problem at night know you're the one that's coming to close it up.
We did that when I was working part-time in Yale. Our responsibility is that was to go to the Yale City Park and close up the facilities. And I think it's a great idea for us to be, we walk through, make sure nobody's in there when we lock it up, see any damage, and we report it to Mike in following more. Thank you.
That would be nice, because right now, the attendance leaves at seven. And if you drive by the beach, it's packed till at least 8:30, nine o'clock. So it would be so nice if we could leave the bathrooms open till nine. The attendants that's there can do their final key at seven, because there's only a handful, you know, old people, so it sounds like we could trash and grab something and they can reclaim.
That's great. Yeah, that's great. Commissioner Lovett?
I just want to commend Acting Chief Heslop for concept of community policing. Talked about it, and just the fact that I see difference in the community already with our police officers who, who are stopping guests if you need help, or if you need something, and, and they're out there, you know, very visible, so thank you for that, continuing to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11A, dispersments including payroll.
I move to dispersments including payroll in the amount of $579,922.77.
That's funny, just...
That's true.
Give an amended memo in front of you.
Five hundred, in the amount of $579,077.77.
Support. Good, any discussion on the dispersments? Commissioner Hendrick?
I got a lot of questions, but in the event of time, I will talk to you later.
All right, roll call, please.
Okay, Mayor Skatard?
Here, I mean...
Can you tell us later?
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No. I'm slightly awake.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Here.
Motion, please.
We still have a second.
Here, yes, it's closed, right? Moving on to item 11B, preliminary financial reports.
Make a motion that we accept the preliminary financial support report. Yes, here it is.
Support.
Motion, support. Any questions or discussion on the financial reports? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On your board. City manager's report.
Uh, let's see. First of all, just wanted to let you know, obviously, even though we did cancel the last meeting, you can see that we've been busy with a lot of information coming in and adding items to the agenda constantly. It doesn't seem like we're slowing down anytime soon, so just wanted to let you know, we've spent a lot of time working and preparing these packets and doing research.
I thought you were just trying to make us pay for taking a meeting, huh?
I warned you, I warned you, but that's, that's okay. We had the visioning session for the master plan for Planning Commission this past Tuesday, as well as the Tifa meeting. I was a little discouraged by the turnout, and amounted to, in essence, 1% of the population in the community, and 1% of the population are the ones that are being heard to drive the future of the community, and there will be more opportunities in the future, when the master plan comes to the Planning Commission, for other people to provide more input and get involved in, and I certainly encourage that. I'm going to be doing the police chief interviews tomorrow, so I should have a recommendation for you by the next meeting. Next week, I've got my conference up in Midland, so I will be out of the office. I will still have my email with me, and at least be checking that, not necessarily working towards responding to it, but I will at least be checking on it and keeping tabs, especially if there's any emergency. That's all I have.
Got a real quick question for... We've had a lot of RFPs coming through in recent times. I read recently that I believe it's MML, if not, it's MML, Semcog, offers a circulation services as part of the membership benefits, where any member municipality can present them with any RFP, and they proactively circulate on our behalf, based on their connections. It's a zero cost, it's a member benefit. Do we use that from either group?
Most of the RFPs that we've had, we have been posting on MML website.
Okay, but this is a proactive service, it's, it's different.
I'm, I'm not that familiar with that, maybe you can share the information.
It was in their recent magazine that they had out this week.
That I don't get.
Okay.
She doesn't get it?
Don't get it. I'll have to get on the mailing list for that one.
But it seemed like they, they listed, I can't recall what the number was, but it's a substantial amount of organizations, they tap into in the thousands, so I thought that, you know, oftentimes, we don't have a lot of people coming back that could service well in the future, and it's a existing benefit we don't pay for, so...
Yeah, if you can share that information with me, and I'll get in contact with them. I'm still working on the RFP for IT services. I've got that pretty well crafted, with all the information and everything we've had going on, and working towards the police chief interviews. That's kind of been on the side burner, but I'll be picking that up again shortly.
Anyone else? All right, we'll start with you, Mr. Avery.
I will pass. I have nothing of value to add tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Hendrick?
I got a couple quick ones. I want to say good luck to the Marine City 1112 boys baseball team with their state championship game this weekend, right? Okay. I want to thank the fire department for the nice paint job in the hall here, they did a nice job doing that for the community. Don't forget the Maritime Festival's coming up, so don't forget to attend that, and don't forget to get out and vote. I'm Doug.
Commissioner Lovett?
I, I will skip everything else, but we lost an important member of our church community at Our Lady on the River and community in general, but my senior, George Brown, passed away this past week, so I hope that you remember him in your prayers. He was originally, he was an associate pastor at the parish in, in the early 1960s, and came back to live here, and was a substitute often at the rectory when other priests weren't available, but a wonderful person. Amen.
Amen. Out of bounds. Pass. Commissioner Malley?
I did want to say, I want to thank the students that came and did their presentation. It's always a delight to see young people getting involved with the community, because there are future residents that, that would like to stay in our community. This way, they're putting a part of it. And earlier, back a few meetings, when I was asked about would I attend, tend to have a voting thing, because I'm up for reelection, and seeing this presentation, that really impressed me, because I thought it was more like, if you're not for this program, you're going to be bashed, and I felt like I didn't want to attend for that reason alone, but I will attend that meeting. I just wanted to let you know, Gary, I was very impressed with the, with the students, and how you're prolonging this program to go, and I'm 100% for you. Thank you.
Dave Simpson?
Just real quick, and this is in regards to some information Mr. Saff just gave us. He indicated we had 27 claims on our insurance, 12, so almost half of those have been slip and fall, so if we haven't already communicated the importance of the sidewalk program and maintenance on our city properties, I think that speaks volumes right there, is, it's almost half of all of our claims, period.
Exactly. All right, now it's up to me. Yeah, I went to the visioning session, it was very, it was a very good, I thought, deal